Let me call the order. The Village of Oaklawn Board of Trustees, regular meeting, agenda. We're meeting here in the Village Hall, 9446 South Raymond Avenue. This is meeting 2023-21. We're Tuesday, December 12, 2023, and it is 7:30 p.m. Roll call, please.
Mayor Boarder.
Present.
Trustee Sack.
Here.
Trustee Desmond. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Here.
Trustee Olin Echuck.
Here.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Stocker.
Here.
Can we have a motion to allow trustee Desmond to participate by phone?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sack.
Here.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Olin Echuck.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stocker.
Thank you. Tim, you're there?
I'm here.
All right, thanks. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Veterans, please salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a wonderful group of young ladies here with us tonight. These are the Daisy and Brownie Girls from Troop 65782, and they are being recognized for their great accomplishments. Judy, your troop leader, are you here? Step up to the podium here, and I'll join you to present these certificates.
First up, we have Nadia Conley.
Nadia. You've got to all smile when you come up here now.
We have Olivia Cummings.
Hi, Olivia.
We have Amora Izelle.
Amora.
We have Mia Habig. We have McKinley Kay. We have Aria Moore.
Aria.
We have Brooklyn Moore. We have Catalaya Palencia. We have Melanie Sanchez. We have Caitlin Schlomendinger. We have Isabella Silva.
Isabel.
And we have Cassidy Thompson. We have two girls that are stuck on 95th, so we'll save them for last. Just real quick, so everybody's aware, these girls have been working at a very young age to do a lot of community involvement. They've actually have fed over 100 individuals through testimony ministry in Mount Greenwood. They've actually done massive donations to Almost Home. And most recently, they have actually collected over 100, a million pop tabs in under a year.
Wow.
And it's the youngest group that has done it in under a year. They started in October, and they celebrated their last portion.
Oh, here.
But we have two last ones here.
Oh, okay.
Come on, come on. Get him on. Go, go, go. So we have Samantha Johnson.
Samantha, come here.
Right there. Alyssa Johnson. We have two other young ladies. One of them unfortunately caught the bug that's running around. Her name is Peyton Callahan. And Evelyn Powers, who was part of our troop but went on to other sports and things like that, but we still wanted to recognize her efforts in helping us achieve the million pop tabs. So you'll keep hearing from these young ladies. They're achieving a lot in the community. They're servicing a lot of the, we call them our friends in the community that are in need, and they're constantly just amazing all of us as parents, as community leaders, and just amazed at what they could do at such a young age. The girls range from, our troop started at the age of five, and our oldest young lady is 12 years old.
Wow.
So.
Very good.
Appreciate your time.
Leader, I, a million pop tabs. They didn't drink all that pop today.
Well, I hope not.
I hope. There's a test in the future.
I, no. Actually, you'll be amazed. These girls would go anywhere, and as parents, we had to carry hand sanitizers and gloves because they would see a shiny pop tab on the floor, and they're like, can we grab it? Or we'd go to the Thunderbolts game as part of school activities or anything else, and they were right behind all the employees saying, can you let me get that pop tab before you take it? Or just asking people as they were ready to check out. So they were a very, very determined group of young ladies to collect pop tabs. Yes, ma'am. This is Isabella. That was during cookie season. They were multitasking there.
Beautiful.
Pre-advertising here. If anybody's interested, I'll see if it starts this Friday.
Oaklawn is in the hands of a future generation. Bright things to happen. Would the newspapers like to take photographs? Do you want to put your picture? All right, ladies.
But wait, Mayor.
Who would like to share what we did with the pop tabs? Nadia? And what does the Ronald McDonald House do with them? Hold on. Maybe Cassidy wants to. Cassidy, what do they do with the pop tabs? Yeah.
Thank you, lady.
Like my mom's friend, her son, in less than 15 minutes, her son had to get away from his mom because he had a bunch of big surgeries because his heart wasn't working.
Yeah. Our motivation was, my friend's son, before he was born in utero, was found out that he had major health issues. And when he was born, they were a little bit more complex than anybody ever expected. So they were in the hands of Laurie's Hospital, and within 15 minutes of birth, he went in for a 24-hour heart surgery and reattachment of his esophagus. And the Ronald McDonald House played a big role in their survival of living in the city of Chicago. So that's what it started from.
We're lucky to have Ronald McDonald House as part of our Oaklawn. It's a wonderful facility that does a lot of good work.
They do.
Mr. Mayor, could I just add?
Sure.
If we could have the parents stand up, because you should be commended for the leadership that you've done and what you show your kids. So great job doing that. Mayor.
They drink a lot of pop. Wink, wink.
I'd like to say a couple other things. Number one is I was impressed by all the badges that you have on your vest. That's a really nice accomplishment. But the next thing is, you were the loudest in the Pledge of Allegiance. I could hear it right behind me, and you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
All right.
Oh, they do that at school every day, so she has practice.
Good deal. Keep, say it loud and proud.
All right. Come on, girls, stand up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Want to stick around for public comments? And then after that, we'll get into the meeting of our minutes. You may not want to stick around for that, but please stick around for public comments.
If you stay for the whole meeting, the mayor will buy you ice cream wherever you want. That's why I'm here.
No, it's a martini for you. You ain't fooling nobody. Yeah, margarita, that's it, yes. All right, Madam Chair, public comments, please.
Yes. First, we have Father Dennis Ziemek.
Father, step to the podium. Are you an Oaklawn resident?
I am.
All right.
My name is Father Dennis Ziemek, and I am pastor of St. Catherine of Alexandria Parish. And I, first of all, would like to congratulate these young ladies on their service and works of charity to the community. That's what, so good to see that. That's a great thing. And I also like to say good evening to everybody, our Board of Trustees, and also the people of Oaklawn. And I am also, besides pastor of St. Catherine of Alexandria, I'm also the dean of Oaklawn Parishes and the surrounding parishes of Oaklawn. So that means I kind of oversee the parishes here in the area. And on behalf of the parishes in the area, I would like to offer up this Christmas blessing. May the love, may love come alive within your heart as Christmas time draws near. May hope fill each room you decorate and bring joy to those you hold dear. May peace be before you at every meal, and faith ring through every song. For Christ is alive, the light of the world. May He bless you all season long. And today, we pray in a special way. Our Lady of Guadalupe, pray for us. And I'd like to wish to you and to all the families of Oaklawn a very Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year. And God bless.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you. Mark McHugh.
Hello, sir.
Good evening.
Are you an Oaklawn resident?
No, sir.
Okay. And your name again is?
My name is Mark McHugh, and I serve as the president and CEO of Envision Unlimited. We're a nonprofit organization that serves people with disabilities, especially people with developmental, intellectual and developmental disabilities. Thanks for giving me a few minutes here tonight. One of the things that our organization does is provide group homes, or CILAs, Community Integrated Living Arrangements, for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And the way we do that is we purchase a home, and people who are looking for, looking to live in a community, you know, they come to us, and we have staff who support them. And the reason I'm here today to talk to you is because we recently put a contract down on a home here in Oaklawn, and we ended up having to pull it back at the end because Oaklawn has a rule that limits CILAs with, restricts them to be more than 1,200 feet from one another. So, you know, at that point, I really couldn't do anything. And really, what I want to say about that is, you know, I'd like you to look at that rule and repeal that rule because of the impact that it has on people with disabilities. We actually were going to help four people who are currently in institutional care move into one, move into this. And there are actually hundreds of people in institutional care that want to live in a community. And so, you know, what, we'll have to look at it for a different home in a different place at this point. But really, if you think about it, no other group of people, you know, has restrictions on where they can live. If you're a person with a physical disability, you can live anywhere you want. Your foster child can live anywhere you want. But here, you have to live at least 1,200 feet from another person with an intellectual disability in a CILA. So I'm sure this is something you never think about, right? But I'm here tonight to ask you to really just repeal that ordinance so that folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities get a fair shake at housing.
Well, thank you. And we'll certainly look into that. Let me ask you a question, though.
Yes, sir.
When, do you have adult supervision in these homes?
Yes.
24/7?
Whenever, whenever there's a resident there, yes. So there are parts of the day where the resident is somewhere else doing something else, working or in a service, but yes.
Yeah. We'll look into it. We have some homes like that.
There are.
In the village. It has created a little bit of problem. I don't recall what it was for some of the neighbors when there isn't supervision for these residents.
So it's a concern, because it is a residential neighborhood. It is.
Okay. But we'll, I think it's a good point. Tom, would we look into that and see if we can make accommodations? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I think that, maybe my last comment I'd add is to, is to look at the alignment with the Fair Housing Act, because the Fair Housing Act is the federal law that really governs this. Okay.
I appreciate your time and your energy. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments?
No.
All right. We'll move on to number six, Conflict of Interest Disclosure. Any trustees on this board have any issues or personal problems with anything on this agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of the regular meeting minutes of 2023-20 dated November 28, 2023. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call. There we go. Tim, are you there now?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, good, good, good. We have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes of 2023-20 dated November 28, 2023. Roll call, please.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Olin Echuck.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stocker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Roll, motion passes. New business by trustees. We'll start in District One. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no new business. I wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
District Two.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity to thank our staff from the fire, police, dispatch 911, Public Works, Water Department, our administration, and our executive administration. Claire, you've done a phenomenal job through the year. Tom, I think under your leadership and taking a look at what we're able to do, again, passing a budget that there's no tax increase, and just all the projects that we know that have gone and been done, especially one of the most difficult ones where you have three major intersections in the Village of Oaklawn that were under construction for a long-term water project that not only get completed, but they got completed within budget. And, you know, that's a work of all people involved. But I just want to let Public Works know that you guys balanced that really, really well, considering that we had Southwest Highway in Cicero, Southwest Highway in Central, and Southwest Highway in 95th Street. Just tremendous job in getting that done amongst the many projects that had to deal with water and our infrastructure. So I look back on the last year, and I give thanks for the people that have made this village a great place to live and work and for all the hard work that's been done there. So thank you all for your great work and due diligence. I want to wish everyone a very merry, very merry and happy and healthy, very Merry Christmas, Happy Healthy New Year, and I look forward to 2024. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. District Three.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments about Santa on the Green, which was held last Saturday. Just a tremendous job by our staff to get everything ready. It was, it was a bonus this year. They were able to take off the normal Thanksgiving holiday and then come back strong the following weekend, get all that taken care of. We had to take care of some things that didn't quite work, and they were right on top of it. Public Works, Bill, your crew, you know, just in that morning, was able to correct some things, and it just made it a beautiful event. I'd like to thank Mrs. Glikis from Comar and Sword Schools for bringing her choir out, Pilgrim Faith Church for coming out and supplying some of the music that we had during the day. So I think everybody had a wonderful time. Santa was able to have kids on his lap again, which we haven't had since COVID, but I think it was a tremendous day. So on top of that, I would just like to thank our staff and wish everybody, their families, Merry Christmas, Happy Healthy New Year. And again, as trustee Olin Echuck said, look forward to 2024 and the wonderful efforts this village puts forth to help our residents enjoy this town, which I think they've done a fabulous job to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee. And your committee, I had the pleasure of attending. There were hundreds upon hundreds of kids that were there. We brightened up their Christmas, and Santa Claus was phenomenal. Came in on our fire trucks. Didn't have any snow this year, so the fire truck was there. You did a wonderful job. Staff did, the committees did. That was a wonderful event. District Four.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to reiterate what some of the other trustees have said about the great job that our executive administration and all the staff and employees have done in creating what looks like to be a very, very favorable budget for 2024. I'm just so pleased that we're able to expand our public safety. We're able to expand all the events and things that we can do and still not have to increase our tax levy. So I think they've done a great job, and I appreciate everything they're doing for the village.
Thank you, trustee. District Five.
I certainly agree with all that's been said before. Our staff and management has done a great job this year. I want to wish all the residents a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a great next year. Thank you.
Thank you. District Six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm not going to do anything more than just say thank you again to everybody for the budget. Great job. I want to make a couple of thank yous to Public Works. As you drive around the village and you see the decorations up, they did another great job with getting our village decorated for the holidays. Also, I mean, it's not even cold weather yet, and I think I've seen three either water main breaks or pipes that broke in the streets, and these guys are out there with hours of them being reported. So it's only going to become more and more as it gets colder out, I'm sure. But, you know, great job to them. Something we haven't talked about in several months that kind of, I'm assuming it's because it's a good thing, but the village, when we brought up our new website, people had been asking about that from the day I became trustee. That was one of the hot issues. And worked with our village manager and IT department, and they got the new website up and running. I've been on there. I actually saw a couple things, made a couple comments and suggestions. And the website, to me, is 100 times better than what it was before. So kudos to the IT department for getting that up and running and for all their hard work on that. And then I just want to thank our first responders, our police and fire. We kind of forget, you know, we get into the holidays, and, you know, these guys are out there every day doing their job, and many of them are working these holidays. And, you know, they kind of get forgotten. So just a big thank you to all those that have to work these holidays and go to report all these calls that come up. So they're, they're much appreciated by all of us. And I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Village Manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And again, not to feed it to death, but everything that was stayed here was accurate to the highest degree. I had the pleasure of watching the Santa on the Green from the upstairs office overlooking the line. And I've been involved in the special events at the village, deeply involved since about 2006, either as the special events chairman, trustee when I was the trustee, or active in the festivals. That by far was the biggest and best I'd ever seen. The line wrapped down the green and around to the library for the entire three-hour period. And I think the best thing that all of us can take from that, it's just great to see families enjoying it, families of all colors, creeds. It was an absolute melting pot. And the community development team, the Public Works team, did a phenomenal job. It's been mentioned about the decorations in the village. We've been getting a lot of calls. It's a commitment this board asked to make two or three years ago to do more each year within budget. And our goal, at one point, Bill, we talked about doing from Harlem to Pulaski and on 95th, and perhaps from Cicero too, because it really does. My father-in-law, who's passed away for a number of years, was a deeply involved Oaklawn guy. They called him Jerry the Brickman. And he used to talk about, he loved to have dinner in Déjà Brou and look at the village green from that venue across 95th, the library. And you really do, if you stop and take a look at that, it really is a beautiful scene. And I think it does a lot for all of our mental well-being. And again, the Public Works crew did a phenomenal job. Our community development group, Bern Zoomhagen, his family. It was just a really good event. And trustee Mallow is already talking about a winter fest next year, tying it in to Santa on the Green. Perhaps a Friday night tree lighting, Crystal Market type thing. I had to talk him off the ledge over here because he was getting out of control. But that kind of energy is what makes this village hum. You know, someone like him, this board, telling the staff, do more, do better each year, and it clearly is well-received by the community because we've heard from a lot of people. And like everybody else, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Tom. You stole a little bit of my thunder that I was going to talk about on the matters of the village for the mayor.
Sorry.
I can tell you that when I first became the mayor, that we were coming off the pandemic, and we were a little sparse on those Christmas tree decorations, and I did get some number of complaints on it. We all kind of met and said, let's cook up our game. Bill, great job. I now get compliments on the wonderful job we do. But I'd like to see them extended more than just where they're at. Maybe at least Cicero to Central, the heart of Oaklawn, maybe for next year. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move on to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine and brought forward at the Director and Board of Trustees. Village manager, village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. And it's rather lengthy, so give me some time here. A, request the Board of Trustees' approval to cancel the second meeting of December, currently scheduled for December 26 at 9:00 a.m., 2023. B, request Board of Trustees' approval and Appeals Board 61 recommendation to approve a 1,700-square-foot impervious surface lot variation at 4632 West 105th Place. And C is Ordinance 232176 approving that variation. D, Ordinance 232177 and Ordinance Amending Title I, Chapter 20, Remote Attendance Policy of the Village of Oaklawn. E, Ordinance 232178 and Ordinance Approving and Amending the Village of Oaklawn's Employee Benefits Handbook to authorize and implement paid leave benefits required for village employees. F, Ordinance 232179 and Ordinance Amending Title III, Business and License Regulations, Chapter 2, Municipal Occupational Taxes, Section 3, 2, 6, Hotel and Motel Occupancy Taxes of Oaklawn Village Code Relative to Hotel and Motel Occupancy Tax. G, Ordinance 232180 and Ordinance Approving the Disposal of Various Pieces of Obsolete Information Technology Equipment. H, Ordinance 232181 and Ordinance Amending Title IX, Chapter 4, Article B, Section 9-4B-3, Sewer Rates and Charges of the Village of Oaklawn Code. I, Ordinance 232182 and Ordinance Amending Title IX, Chapter 4, Article B, Section 9-4B-2, Water Rates and Charges of the Village of Oaklawn Code. J, Ordinance 232183 and Ordinance Amending the 2023 Village of Oaklawn Municipal Budget to Provide for Additional Police and Fire Pension Funding. K, Ordinance 232184 and Ordinance for Levy and Assessment of Taxes for the Tax Year 2023, Collectible During the Physical Year Beginning January 1, 2024 and Ending December 31, 2024, for the Village of Oaklawn, County of Cook, Illinois. L, Ordinance 2321-85 and Ordinance Authorizing Abatement of the Tax Levy for General Obligation Bonds Series 2009A, taxable obligation, general obligation bonds, Series 2010A, that's Build America Bonds Direct Payment. Taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2017A, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2017B, general obligation corporate proposed bonds, Series 2022A, general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2006 Water Fund, general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2011A, that's the Water Fund, waterworks and sewage renewal bonds, Series 2019, and senior lien water revenue bonds, Series 2022 Water Fund for the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois. Phew. Okay. M, Ordinance 232186 and Ordinance Adopting the 2024 Village of Oaklawn Municipal Budget. N, Resolution 232180, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a temporary impairment easement agreement with the Board of Education, Orland School District, Number 135, as part of the Regional Water System Improvement Project, and that's Liberty Elementary School in Orland Park. O, Resolution 2321- O, Resolution 232181, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving property and liability insurance proposal to renew coverage with the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust for a total annual premium of $984,804. P, Resolution 232182, a resolution approving four change orders for work related to the Oaklawn Regional Water System, Water Transmission Main Bid Package Number 4B. Contractor is Reliable Contracting and Equipment Company. Q, Resolution 232183, a resolution waiving competitive bidding and approving of the purchase of one new 2023 Ford F-150 from Napleton Ford of Oaklawn for a total price including accessory lighting and radio not to exceed $48,862.03. Resolution 232184, a resolution approving the purchase of one new 2023 F-150 from Napleton Ford for a total price including accessory lighting, radio, and that's not to exceed $48,425.17. And five, Resolution 232185, a resolution approving the purchase of one new 2023 Caterpillar 42007-St. Baco Loader from L24CAT for a total price not to exceed $151,576. Motion, please, on the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second?
I'm going to remove N, Mayor.
You're going to, I was going to, okay. Well, okay. You're just going to remove it?
But you're going to take the roll before we remove it?
Yeah, I think we got to take.
You take.
We take.
Take it out.
Yes, we take it out. Okay, removing N from those resolutions. That is Resolution 232180, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a temporary and permanent easement agreement with the Board of Education of Orland School District 135 as part of the Regional Water System Improvement Project, and that's Liberty Elementary School in Orland Park, Illinois. A motion on everything we've, we had a motion, we had a second. A roll call on everything except N.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Consent agenda passes. All right, Village Clerks, report.
Don't we have to resolve N?
You should, now you took N off the consent agenda, so you need to deal with it separately. So I think what they want to do is a motion to postpone.
Motion. Okay, all right. Okay. We need a motion to postpone N.
Make a motion to postpone.
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, Village Clerks, report.
Disbursement Resolution Number 2023-21D dated December 12th, 2023 in the amount of $12,467,542.93.
Motion, please.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Motion passes. Okay, okay. Village Presidents, report. A is a request Board of Trustees' approval of a Liquor and License Review Board 700 recommendation to approve a proposed amendment to change Sunday sales to begin at 9:00 AM instead of the current 11:00 AM for establishments with specific classifications. And I understand we have somebody in the audience here referenced to this. Yes, sir. Would you like to step up to the monitor and explain why you feel this might be necessary?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I'm Bill Brenner from Arena Lanes. Been almost a year since we've owned the business, of course. It's just over here where he gave us our liquor license at this meeting. So thank you. Right now, we are requesting that we can sell alcoholic beverages at nine o'clock in the morning. We have a couple neighboring communities that are able to sell at nine o'clock in the morning. And one of them, which is far down south, is Lockport. I have a league that I was able to get from Oak Forest Bowl at 200 men that bowl at nine o'clock in the morning. They have been used to being able to purchase alcohol at nine o'clock in the morning. And they're threatening to actually leave my business, bowl all the way down to Lockport because they're able to purchase beverages at nine o'clock in the morning. And also being a longtime resident of Oaklawn, been a resident for 20 years. Bless you.
Thank you.
I would love to have the opportunity too to bring my wife on one of the few Sundays that I have off to be able to have a mimosa or Bloody Mary with breakfast at Oaklawn at Satchment. But right now, we are, like I said, at Arena Lanes, kind of at a, you know.
Disadvantage.
Yeah, commercial disadvantage with neighboring communities.
And with the, with the fire at the Oak Forest bowling alley.
Correct.
We've had a whole surplus of additional leagues looking for space.
Correct.
And Oak Forest allows them earlier. We've done a little research on this, I have personally, because this has been in discussion for maybe a year now. And I've talked to a lot of our surrounding communities and many of them, one or two stick with this 11 o'clock. But most, actually, earlier than even nine o'clock. But I think nine o'clock is a concession to our current 11 o'clock rather than seven o'clock. Any questions from trustees?
What are some of the special classifications? Says, special classifications. Are we doing this just for arena bowl or?
No, 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 no. This will allow any tavern or bar or restaurant with a liquor license to serve liquor, okay, beginning at 9:00 AM. But they will not be able to sell packaged liquor until 11:00 AM. And that would go also for our, our White Hens and 7-Elevens. They currently cannot sell till 11:00 AM on Sunday, but this will not affect them. They'll still have to live with the 11:00 AM licensing. So packaged liquor, I guess there is some exceptions for DeJewel and Walgreens at 9:00 AM. They can sell at nine, but our, our fast food kind of places, they're still going to be at 11:00 AM. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I'll take a motion.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Congratulations.
Pass the ordinance first.
Yeah, we got to pass the ordinance. Ordinance Number 232187 and Ordinance Amending Title III, Business License Regulations, Chapter 3, Liquor Control, Section 33-6 of the Oaklawn Village Code